Oh, she's not gonna be here?
Oh, really?
Well, I'll do first.
And they were all the others who said, "Oh, let's go make a copy." Let's go make a copy.
Monthly meeting of Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Don, will you lead us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of guests above and beyond war. Dr. Barrett?
Louise, you wanna come on up?
I'm on that.
Louise Elliott has been with us, this is the beginning of her 16th year. She started in 2004, and she began at Lake City Middle School, and then she moved to Dutch Valley as the manager. It's hot in here. Excuse me. And she has represented us many years very well. In 2007, we had a federal audit, and at that time Louise was at Dutch Valley, and that was one of the schools that they chose, and they passed with flying colors. This year has been a very trying year for Louise. She had an assistant manager that she had worked with and trained very well, and trained her so well that she got a promotion into another school, and at Norris Middle. So off and on for two months, Louise has served the students at Dutch Valley with just herself. We haven't had anyone else in there to assist her, other than the occasional substitute, as well as the staff at the school has pitched them. Anyone of any less character than Louise, I don't think would have ever stayed there. She persevered, and she did a wonderful job for us, and she continues to do so, and we are very lucky to have her, and we do appreciate it. Do you wanna say anything, Louise?
No, just go ahead, hands and heart.
That's it. Good deal.
Thank you very much.
Well, Louise, this is a check for you, and this is your certificate. It says above and beyond, and you go above and beyond every day. If you look like that, it'll be your picture. Thank you very much. We want you to...
I'd like to welcome our friend and neighbor from Campbell County, Ms. Fay Heavely. Fay's been a long-time member of the Board of Education hierarchy down in Nashville, so glad to have you.
It's so good to be here.
And board behave, because she's supposed to be my honor. Something good, Tennessee Arts Academy.
Hi, everybody. I'm Allison Greenhouse. I'm the art teacher at Norris Elementary and Fairview Elementary.
Graham Richardson, I'm art, visual art teacher at Clinton Middle School.
The past three years, Anderson County Schools has funded professional development training for two art teachers and two music teachers to attend the Tennessee Arts Academy at Belmont University in Nashville. It's a week-long summer institute, which I think is probably one of the best in the whole nation. It's really extraordinary. This year, again, the school system funded two art teachers and two music teachers, and additionally, we had three of our art teachers go and find their own funding to be able to go. This was my third year to go, just because it's such an extraordinary week, so inspiring, so exciting to get to go and come back with all these great ideas. So it's exciting. We had seven teachers from our school system represented at this week-long training, and it's a training for art teachers, music teachers, theater teachers, classroom teachers who teach in arts-integrated schools also attend. So there's just a wide range of teachers, and you get inspired, and you get to network with teachers, and, you know, from across the state. There's just a lot happening all week long. The best part for me is that everyone says, "Thank you for what you do. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you for what you do for the kids in teaching the arts." And this year, like, of course, we get to make a lot of art, but we also get to listen to a lot of speakers, and the biggest takeaway for me from the week was Peter Reynolds, who is an author and illustrator. He wrote the book The Dot, and the children's book Ish, and many other books. He was, he came and spoke to us, and I wrote down this quote while he was speaking. It said, "Be an expert in progress. Keep making, creating, and sharing." And I just thought that was really kind of a good statement of what we were doing there, was getting to be better teachers ourselves, and taking time, you know, to get better at what we do as professionals. And then Graham had something that he's doing in his classroom right now that he learned there.
One thing that I took away from it, seeing the ones who had gotten go in the past, who wanted to find their own money, pay for their own way to go back. That's something to be said within a program, to want to pay your own money to go back to it, to go to it so bad. I'm doing this week paper mache birds that I learned at the Art Institute, so I'm currently using something pulling away from that program, currently. And then again, whenever they had presenters, who had book authors, or some people who wrote plays, I was sitting there, and I'm not a big person who goes into that, and that was probably one of the biggest things that I took away, was the people that had to come speak to us about their life experiences and things that was just, it was not something that I expected, and it was, I was so glad that I went.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Persons to be heard. Oh, I'm sorry.
The Leaps Grant.
Where?
The Leaps Grant.
Oh, okay.
Leaps Grant, yes.
Slipped one in.
Yeah, it did.
All right. Well, I am Candace Shebanks. I'm the project director, program director for the Leaps Grant. This is my second year to do that. Let me see if I can make this present button up here, so you don't look at all of the stuff. We were awarded the grant again this year, and the grant total is $451,266. That serves the six sites that we hold the after-school program in: Bryceville, Dutch Valley, Grand Oaks, Norwood, Clinton, and Norwood Middle. Each of those sites are open 15 hours a week, and that's after-school, and that gives the kids structure. It gives them homework help. It provides an after-school snack. We do a healthy, they have to have a, not just a, kind of a PE-type component of it as well. And then, on top of that, if they have, if they're at risk, we can do an intervention with them for reading or math. Then, the fun part of it is, we try to promote things that they wouldn't necessarily get to be a part of. So in some of the clubs, they have dance, cooking, there's various sports that they get to try out, theater, some art, archery. So there's a lot, a variety of activities and clubs that each of these sites host. The attendance, last year when I met with you all, I said we were on track for getting almost, for having almost 400 kids, serving almost 400 students. That's up considerably from the year before. And here's the thing, we serve well over the 392 total kids that are registered, or that can be considered students that attend, because they don't actually count, and we don't get funding for them unless they attend 30 or more days. So we've got probably three times as many who may come sporadically, or as they need help. So that's something to be said as well. I didn't say this on the last slide, but three of the schools also serve a supper program that we have partnership, have a partnership with Ethera, so that we also feed them supper. So Margaret takes care of them for breakfast and lunch, and then we feed them a supper. So I think that's a, that's a great thing for many of our students. Successes, gosh, we set attendance goals last year. One of the things that I think that helped us to kind of have that boost of attendance was an incentive field trip at the end. It was, it was to the Battle of Chattanooga, and it was all historical, so it was all things at, you know, there was only, I think, one or two of the kids, of the two busloads of kids that I took down that had ever done that tour. And it was really, really neat to see how, how much they enjoyed that. Like I said, it provides extracurricular opportunities for students in the Title I schools. It also gives an academic boost. Up until this year, we had been able to give our own data that we were showing, so in previous years, I was able to track, and I used what our EZCBM that we monitor with our universal screeners. This year, we're, the state has changed all of the Leaps Grant and 21st Century Grants to report card grades. So that'll be something that we'll strive for on the board. I have, what the state is shooting for is 50%, and you can see the schools and where they fall. So we're in the process of making goals for each of those schools to bolster that. Like I said, I think, it's a twofold thing. You know, we don't get a, they don't increase if they started with an A and they stated an A. So that's, you know, I'm wondering how that will fold, will come out. But it's one way that the state can look at across all of the programs. And then here's the middle school data. We did really well with, in all of the areas, with, they're wanting to show that the impact of the after-school grant also helps to increase the attendance during the day. Some of the things that we're gonna try this year that we haven't done in the past, we're partnering through Anna Hurt with the UT Extension Program. We're gonna try to have another field trip maybe for the first semester, as well as the second semester. We're gonna continue on with the Ethera Program. Two things that I picked up from attending the conference in Indiana just recently, there was a company called EverFi, and it gives, it's free to us, it has sponsors that are paid for, and so it had some pretty neat modules that, and curriculum, that the schools can use and tie in with some of the after-school activities. The Tennessee After-School Network was more on the social awareness and community awareness and service learning projects, so I'd like to get some of those started as well. But all in all, we, I just wanted to take this chance to let you hear a little bit about it, if you had any questions. These are some of the different sites, some of the activities that they have been doing so far this year at some of the different schools. But we just thank you all for allowing us to do this, and supporting us, and letting us to run through. I know it's not always easy at the business office, and you have, you know, but it really does help the kids, so.
Is this for one hour after-school?
No. It runs from the end of school until approximately 5:30. It depends on the after-school, like, middle school is a little bit different timing, but it's, it runs two hours after-school, two, two and a half hours.
And do you know the children who need help?
We do. We start with those, that's, that's part of the process of picking the kids, or selecting the kids. We start with the kids, and that's where, like, when I said that we use the EZCBM, we were targeting kids who were at risk academically, and we asked them to stay. Now, we don't have funding for transportation, but that has, the parents have been able to, for the most part, it looks like, get the kids there and pick them up. Well, they don't have to get them there, but to pick them up. So, like I said, that's, that's something, but it's nice. It also kind of fills the gap for them, like, if we have working parents. To them, it's free after-school care, but it's structured after-school's care. So, and the kids are getting homework help, and like I said, the ones who need intervention, we've got some, we're paying some of our interventionists at the school to stay and provide reading and/or math intervention after-school for them.
And how many teachers do you have in there working with the children?
It, it, most days, it depends on the size of the school, but some of the, like, for instance, Grand Oaks has six teachers that stay after-school.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's good.
Does your LEAP grant encompass a summer program, too?
Yes, a very short one. We tried to pattern it after the Read to Be Ready one. We ran it two weeks this, this year, but we didn't have the funds to run it any longer than that. It really all depends on, like, we have, I have a week set into the budget right now, but if we have snow days, then that money, I just, we just carry over and tack into, so we can try to use it all up, and service the kids the best we can.
How do you choose the schools that you participate?
Gosh, when I took it over, the schools had already been selected. I'm not sure exactly, I know that it was put out at the very beginning, I know that Norwood, Grand Oaks, Dutch Valley, we're all a part of it when we started this six years ago.
This is our second cycle with this grant, so it's a three-year grant when you get it, and so we did our first three years, and at that time, some schools just came together who saw it as an opportunity, and it started with four, I believe, the first year, and then some other schools wanted to come on board. So if they wanna come on board, we wanna bring them on with the hands.
And so this would be the year, this is the re-up, if you will. I'll be writing it when it comes available, and so, you know, I'm sure, like, the last time, we put it out there, and I think it was just an interest for the, first, we've gotta have, we've gotta have enough teachers to say, "Yes, we will stay," because it'll fail if we don't have the teachers' input and wanting and willingness to stay. So, and we're able to compensate the teachers nicely, but still, it's, you have to stay until 5:30.
It's a wonderful program.
So.
It is. Thank you.
I noticed where you surveyed the kids to ask them what programs they were interested in in the future.
Mm-hmm, we do.
Do you recall what?
Oh, gosh, they'll come up with, that's how we got cooking, we got, we added Legos, we've added some STEM classes because of things that they added, or they asked for.
Archery.
Archery was one of them, that's exactly, I started to say, that was one of them that they, that they asked for. I'm looking for a way that, one thing that did come up was, end of, like, being able to learn guitar. I'm working on trying to find a way to get that. First, I've gotta find a teacher who can play, teach guitar, but, you know, that's, trying to fill the needs, but, and based on what the kids want.
I just wondered what they were thinking about for the future.
I should say, lots of them have sports that they wanna do, and we, you know, those are easy to fill because, but, like I said, the cooking, cooking seems to be a big hit. There was another one, they were wanting, there was, it was a magic club, like, not, like, you know, like, the magic tricks where you're, like, oh, you're pulling the coin out behind the ear. They're having, the teacher had them to read and research, and so, you know, it may be all fun things, the sleight of hand where you have the card trick, but they were having them to read and to write about that, they were journaling about it, so kind of tying in some of this reading and writing with them, and they don't even realize that we've packed that in.
Do you use any volunteers, or is that just all school staff that runs that?
It's mostly school staff. We haven't had a whole lot of volunteers. We've had, some of the sites have partnered with, like, Girls Inc. has come to some of the sites. There's a handful of parents who will occasionally come and help if we send out for, like, we're gonna be doing this project, anybody wants to come. One of the things that we are working on, and have been working on, is the parent involvement piece. That's what I'm hoping with the UT Extension, that Anna had talked about, Anna Hurt had talked about, there was a canning, and there was, like, food, it was, it was meals on a dime, you know, trying to, meal prepping, that type of thing. So that, we were hoping to be able to offer that to the parents as well to come in, to learn that side by side with the, with the kids.
Could you go back to slide number five?
Sure.
And I wanna see if I'm reading it right. It says, at the middle one, at least 50% of students who participate in 30-plus days. Grand Oaks, 11.4%. Now, that, that would scare you, but that means they've already reached a plateau and they're increasing.
They could have, like, I, I put, I put in all the grades, and they were not terrible grades. I had to hand in, put all of these grades at the end of the school year, and they, I did not put in a ton of Cs, Ds, and Fs. It was, there were a lot of As and Bs, and so...
Does this say that they are already there, and they've just increased that?
That's what I, that's what I'm, I'm getting guidance from Don. I understand, like, this is, this part is the new part to me, and it's new to all of the Leaps, because that's how they wanna, wanna look at it, so.
I look at that as, I look at that as growth.
And that's, and that's what I told when I handed this back to the site coordinators, "Guys, this is something that we can grow upon." You know, I know this, we're not near the 50, 50th, you know, 50%, but it is something that we can shoot for. And, you know, I tried to get clarification from the SWARPs, it's UT SWARPs who's collected all of this information.
Well, the good thing is, they didn't, they didn't go down. So if they were an A first, if they were an A in the fall, and they stayed an A in the spring, then we didn't get to put them on.
We didn't get to put them on. That was my question at the, at the seminar, at the, at the conference. I was like, "So if they were an A and they stayed an A, they're not counted?" And she was like, "We're working on that."
But that does show growth, you're exactly right.
But knowing Grand Oaks and their plateau already, that's, they didn't have a whole lot of room to improve. They were already there.
So they're, like I said, I think this is a positive, and it's a standard way to look at all of the sites.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Now, persons to be heard. Being none, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Move, second approval of the agenda, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved, chairman.
Second.
Move for second approval of the consent agenda, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no motion carries. Executive approval, there was none this month. Comments from the chair. We need delegates for the TSBA convention. Volunteers, or do we appoint?
Is everybody going? Is everyone going? Is everyone going to?
I'm not. I have, I've got an FAA meeting I've gotta go to, so I've canceled out.
Well, I'm the credentials committee, so I can't be a delegate.
How many delegates do you need, Dr. Pearl? Four.
Yeah, four.
Just go ahead and put me and Scott down.
Yeah, I'll be glad. Thanks, Don. Voluntelling me.
Scott, Don, and Glenda.
No, I can't.
We're always good together.
That's right. Is that on Sunday?
We had four volunteers.
Saturday? Saturday afternoon. Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Sick leave incentive winner.
What did you decide about the delegates?
I'm sorry? I think you put out four of them there, is what I think.
I said, "Who did you put as delegates?"
Everybody that's here.
One, two, three, four. Joe said she couldn't, so.
Yeah. Okay, if it's Saturday, I will. If it is Saturday afternoon, you're welcome.
We do have, as you know, too, on Friday night, we have the UTRUST Dinner this year, and it's gonna be at the Music Hall of Fame, the Country Music Hall of Fame, and we've got to do that before, and that was, that's a pretty neat place, so you'll get to go through the Hall of Fame free and everything, and have the dinner that night, so that'll be a real nice meal.
If you haven't been through that Hall of Fame, it's, it's a real pleasure to see ya.
And Sunday morning? Sunday, yeah, I got that, Clinton High School will be performing Sunday morning. I got that in my, we'll talk more about that in just a minute, yes.
Great thing. They've done some excellent stuff. Thank you.
On the sick leave incentive bank, tonight I have Megan Chesney. Glenda?
I have Brandon Ward, teacher at Clinton Elementary School, and Teresa has...
That's Claxton Elementary.
Oh, is it Claxton? I'm sorry. Okay. Teresa has Brian Moore, teacher at Clinton High School.
I have Rebecca Hall, food service, I think it's Clinton High School.
Yes.
Dell has Rachel Blakely, teacher at Fairview Elementary School. Joe?
And I have Sinara McCormick. She's an educational assistant at Claxton Elementary.
And my winner is Debbie Eckley, who's a teacher at Andersonville Elementary.
And mine is April Bunch, food service at Clinton Middle School. Thank you.
And Dr. Pearl, if I can, I wanna show you all, for all the people that have, went all last year and did not miss a day, they, we've been handing out our jackets, and that's part of that UTRUST money, so I've been going out, if you see some pictures and everything, so anybody that did not miss a day this last year gets a jacket, so that's kind of a neat thing, and...
That's good.
Just, and we had a lot of them. Pam, what was it? It was 100 and...
It was, I think it was 74.
74, okay. Okay, so 74 people didn't miss a day last year. I give one to a food service lady today at Andersonville Elementary School, and she's not missed a day in five years.
Wow. That's great. Wow. Tell them what this is about.
Oh, and, and for the ones that don't know, every month, anybody that did not miss a day this month is awarded 200 extra dollars on their check, and...
Randomly.
Random, yeah, we randomly pick those from whoever, for them this month that didn't miss a day, and we do that every month. So it's just a, kind of a, thank you for doing a great job.
That's nice.
Thank you, Dr. Pearl.
Comments from the student board members? Gabriel, Daylin? Comments?
Yeah, you can do it either place, it doesn't matter.
Well, I think it's a great thing that we are incentivizing our teachers being there with the students, because as we know, here in Anderson County, we have excellent teachers, and we need these excellent teachers to be with our students as much as possible to make a positive impact on our lives. So overall, I think the incentivizing not missing any school per month is a great idea.
I would just like to reinforce that, most of the teachers that I know, if not all of them love their jobs, and giving them that extra benefit is another sugar in the tea, I guess you could say.
Yep, good deal. And then you can do the comments. You can do, if you've got other comments, you can go ahead with those.
The school report?
Yep, yep, school report, yep.
Yes, sir. Our junior representative for homecoming, Bailey Alley, was crowned queen at the homecoming ballgame last Friday. Lady Mavs volleyball won the district tournament and are hosting the substate tonight to play with a chance to go to Murfreesboro. The all-region volleyball tournament team from AC includes Morgan McMurray, Hannah Freeman, and MVP Matty Rowland. Lady Mavs soccer team is the regular season district champions and are playing tonight to be crowned district tournament champions. Storm Klein and Tanner Strokes were selected from thousands of contestants through Fishing University and the Outdoor Channel to compete for an approximate sixty thousand dollar scholarship to Bethel University. Contestants supplied hashtag entries through their social media to Fishing University's social media and their vote was selected. They will compete head to head against one other vote for this scholarship. And they're going to fish for bass at Kentucky Lake. AC also hosted a practice ACT this past month with ninety-one participants. AC Scholars Bowl team competes tomorrow and will be filmed for broadcast at a later date on PBS.
Most recently, we had our senior retake for the ACT. A lot of students at our school were ready to retake that and show improvement from their previous scores. We've also had our 10th graders take the pre-ACT so that they can get a taste of what they'll be facing in the years to come. And there's a lot more drive for getting into college, a lot more goal setting. Ms. Merriman's done a great and excellent job of that and paired it up with getting all of the FASs done. I believe recently we had over a hundred seniors get their FASs done within the first three days of it being open. So that's a good portion of our senior class already ready to take the next step after high school. Another thing that's recently happened is our revelry. We've had JRGC do a big ceremony for raising up the flag to start showing the Americanism and the pride to be who we are. And then adding that in would be the college application week that just happened. All of our seniors that didn't know maybe more about their local colleges because it was more prevalent to those in Tennessee, where they were going to go and what those colleges were going to be like, they got a firsthand experience to talk to those people, to learn more about where they're going and the financial opportunities that are provided from them. And that was also paired up with the Not Hope Scholarship. Tennessee Promise information that's come through and that's also been assisting those students who, even if they have a low income, still have a chance for that secondary education.
Boys, thank you. And I, I would like to invite you to join us on Monday night prior of the, the week prior to the board meeting because that's when the committees meet and that's when we thrash out everything that, all the nuts and bolts are taken care of on Monday night so that we don't have to go through everything on, on, on the board meeting. So you all are more than welcome to come and join in. Okay, director's report.
Yes, Dr. Burrell, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to, this month with UTRUST is we've been, we've, we've been really celebrating our custodians. And they do a fantastic job. If you go to any Anderson County school, you walk in the school and it is clean, it, it's well taken care of, there's no writing on the wall, the floor's shiny, and, and they do a tremendous job. And, and, while a lot of teachers and, and a lot of staff, I was off last week, they were still working and they were, they were polishing floors, they were taking up carpet, they were painting different things, they were cleaning up around the schools. And, and we just want to, we just want to thank them tonight for what they do. They do an excellent job for our custodians. The other thing is the five-year plan, we will be talking, you all will be looking at when we go on our board retreat in February. We've, we've done some adjustments to it and just kind of updating on some things you all have changed. And it, it is, you can, you can pull it up from our board agenda tonight. The other thing is just, just kind of some things that is true tonight. The volleyball's playing, Anderson County volleyball's playing for, they're playing the substate. If they win next week, they will go to Murfreesboro. We will, we hopefully will win those, they call them some kind of rounds, but by Wednesday night, we'll know if they're in the finals. They'll have the finals on Thursday. So that, that's really exciting again with the, with the soccer. They're doing the district tournament there tonight. Back to the custodians, the, the, at Lake City Middle School, for the first time, I think, in about forty years, we've redone the floor, the gym floor. It looks beautiful. It is, the wood, the person on there that, that redone it said, you can't buy that wood anymore and it is beautiful. And if you get a chance to go by and look at that, they took the carpet, they took the carpet up out of the, out of the library and they did the, where you put this, it's, I guess it's, it's some kind of paint and things that you, you never have to wax it anymore. And they're doing a lot of that at Clinton High School right now, trying to spuce those things up. So they did a lot of work. Our, our door keys for the safety of our students, our cars, I don't have mine on there, our card readers, all of those now have been styled. We're still working on trying to maybe move a couple to get them better located, but they worked on changing all the manual locks, they've started that. So another thing that I talked with Mr. McCamey and he said ESG is about ninety, almost ninety percent done with all the things they're going to do. So we hope to be done sometime in January with that. And as you know, that was an eleven million dollar project and, and we're excited about that. The other thing, the, the Clinton Coral Department, they're going to, if you want to get a chance, they're going to present their annual Fall Concert at seven o'clock in the theater. And that's going to be, I don't have a date on that.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday night. And so you can come.
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yep. And there's going to be all kinds of music and everything, so come and be a part of that. But then on another thing, they will be performing in Opryland at the TSBA convention on Sunday morning. You know, they only picked one group to do that and that's pretty neat. They had to send in a taped demo and, and they had to do kind of an online interview and they got picked, so we're excited about that. The, the school system is going to give each student a twenty-five dollar stipend to help with food and we've asked the county commission to help with paying the buses. It's about fifteen hundred dollars. So we're hoping next Monday night that they will approve that through some of the waste management money. We also have, had the in-service on October the fourth, was great. It, it, there were so many things going on in this district and the teachers were engaged and I know they had worked so hard, our teachers worked so hard. And it was the day before fall break, but they were engaged, they were learning and they wanted every day to get better, so we were really excited about that. The other thing, on Tuesday night, we had our first elementary basketball game. We, we now have elementary basketball teams in most of our elementary schools. We, we took that from, from Campbell County and, and I think it's going to be a great thing. Right now, they're going to be playing, this first year's kind of a trial. We're going to be playing at Norris Middle School, but they, we're going to be playing the Clinton City Blaze some and they're going to play each other. And I really think it's, it's a great way to get, as we say, get more of those students involved. It's amazing, the elementary schools, they have wrestling, they have cross-country, they, some of them have volleyball, now they have, they have, some of them have what are called a swim team and now they're going to have basketball. So the more they have, you know, the more those students can get involved. Last but not least, over fall break, we had a student that passed away at Clinton High School. She was in, she was in our CDC room, Madeline Ryan was her name. And Jones Mortuary, they're helping with the funeral and they set up a fund at First Baptist to, for anybody that wants to help with that funeral. And that was, you know, that, that, a seventeen-year-old taken so, so young. And I, I'm not sure, it, it was a medical, she had some kind of medical problem and they didn't, I don't know, they couldn't get, couldn't get to it fast enough. So, so let's just remember Madeline's family going through this. Dr. Burrell, that's all I have.
Committee reports. Bill and Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the Bill and Grant's committee met on Monday night and we heard from the Lewis Architects Group and provided a overview of potential feasibility study for the system that would review structural, student capacity, health and safety at our facilities, fire protection and ADA compliance areas along with others to be determined. And that motion did pass and I so move.
Move second, we approved the motion, have the motion worded.
The motion was a request the Director of Schools to furnish a RFP for the needs that should be addressed by the feasibility study and revisit it at the first of the year.
Pam, you get all that?
I did, yes.
Okay. All, discussion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met Monday night, pretty short and sweet. If we can get, I guess that's coming. I guess it's coming maybe, okay. We have all the, the report.
Okay, I don't have the report.
Oh, there's, is that hyperlink's on there, I think. Right there.
There it is.
That's it.
Pam, what did he do?
There it is, there it is, there it is. I know you all can read that, especially, doesn't it? And, and we have talked, we discussed these at length Monday night at our regular committee meetings. So if we seem to be skimming over them tonight, it's because we've already hashed them out. But the first three items are simply rollovers from, from grants. The first one's coordinated school health, second's tobacco grant, and the third is the Family Resource Center grant. Item one D is, well, D and I are actually related. The one's an increase and decrease of a hundred thousand dollars that goes into the trustee's office to pay for federal projects. Front money for that before those grant monies come in. One E is two hundred thousand dollars for textbooks, which we do each year. One F is an insurance claim for Bryceville Elementary. We had a little mold problem in the gym there summer and also putting mulch on the playground. So that's forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for that. G and H are IDEA grants, money, one's an increase and one's a decrease. Then I is, is related to E there. And then one J is the UTRUST money for our companion program and it just has to be treated differently. So it, we have to run that through, through the appropriation process, but that's UTRUST grant money. So those are the appropriations, one A through one J. Those have been approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board for approval and I so move.
Move second, we approve appropriations one A through one J for our student board members. We went over these individually and discussed them Monday night, so we're not just, not just voting on the discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Overall, all vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Yep. Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
The transfers, we had a few of those too. Two A is appropriation for our attendance incentive awards, that's nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. The two B is additional hours for psychologists, which is six thousand dollars. Two C is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act preschool. That's just a transfer from one code to another, two thousand four hundred, two dollars twenty-eight cents. Two D is employee childcare, three thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars. Two E is CPR training for our companion program, two hundred and fifty dollars. And two F is an additional help with food delivery and, and cleanup and that's nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. So those transfers, two A and two F, have been approved by the Budget Committee and recommended to the board for approval and I so move.
Second.
Move second, we approve transfers two A through two F, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's all from the Budget Committee.
Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Burrell. The Policy Committee also met on Monday night and we reviewed four policies. The first one is one point one oh one, role of the Board of Education. And this lists the legal responsibilities of the Board's functions. It was modified to clarify the roles of the Board of Education. Previously, it just had general areas of responsibility. And the committee recommended approval on first reading and I so move, second.
Move second, we approve this first reading or?
Yes.
First reading on policy number one point one oh one, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Our next policy is one point two oh two one and this is renumbered from one point one oh two to, uh, close out the confusion of the scope of the policies. And this policy is, was previously the Effective Boardsmanship Standards, that was its earlier name. And it expands the standards from the previous policy and the committee recommended approval on first reading and I so move.
Second.
Move second, we approve policy number one point one oh two point one, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Our next policy is one point two oh two, duties of school board members. And this one is revised to focus on the legal duties that are outlined in state laws. And the committee recommended approval on first reading and I so move.
Second.
Move second, we approve policy number one point two oh two, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
And our last policy is one point four oh seven, school district records. And the reason we had to bring this one up is because it had a person's name in it as a contact. The person is no longer here, so we just changed it to a department. And the committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Move second, we approve policy number one point four oh seven, discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That concludes what we did on Monday night and you and, and Dr. Parrott and I got an email this week and we've got seven, they have been revising our policy manual and we've got seven changes that are coming up that we'll get to next month along with a couple more.
Next month?
Next month. That's it.
That it? Okay. Action item. Termination of tenured teacher.
Dr. Burrell, we're still working on a separation agreement with that party and I would like to, if it's okay with the board, is to table that till next month.
I make a motion we table termination of a tenured teacher.
Second.
Move, say we table the termination of tenured teacher, discussion. Will they come back to the board?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Approve the two thousand, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school. Approve the two thousand, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar.
Dr. Burrow, we have taken this calendar before the version one and version two, before collaborative conferencing, and we, and we've talked with our staff about this, and we're recommending version one. It is, it is the same calendar as, as this year, the only difference is, instead of having an in-service day the day before fall break, we have an in-service day on November the third, which will be the president election day. So we really try not to have school on election days, it's just too hard to do, so that's it. We've got one in March this coming year that's kinda slipped up on me, we're gonna try to do something with that, but I would ask that the board approve version one for the next school calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move second, we approve version one of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar, discussion.
Do they get the Friday off after Thanksgiving? You know, last year we discussed that, and-
Well, they get, they get the whole week out week.
Good, okay.
Whole week. Now, now, the two hundred and sixty-day employees still have to work that Monday and Tuesday, or take vacation. Okay, 'cause they get Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off, so we didn't give any more vacation, unless, unless you all want to.
You're brave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A little discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
I don't have, Katrina, do you have the names of the sick leave bank people?
It's myself, Suzie, and Ms. Williams.
Okay, we, what we've done is, we've just had to, we've had to, those were the ones that were on it, we just had to take the new HR person off, and, and we'll put the new HR person back on. But we just wanted to make sure that was approved, taking Mary off of there, so.
Will we need to take action later?
I think, I think we ought to just go ahead and prove that, prove the changes tonight, if that's okay with you all. And I'm sorry, I didn't get that link, those names, but it's Katrina Oakley, Suzie Smith, and then we have to have one from the board, and that's Joe Williams.
Did we approve?
Second.
Move second, we approve the sick, the sick leave bank, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries. I didn't hear but one vote.
Yep, for it. Dr. Burrow, just a reminder that next month, we will meet on Monday night at the Head Start Building. I think it, it said, it said four forty-five? That's what it says, but I was thinking it was five forty-five.
Well, we, we meet at six with our committee.
So it's four forty-five, and we'll eat, start eating about five, and then start doing training, then we'll have our meetings at six o'clock. And then the board meeting will be here at the same place, but it'll be on Wednesday night, okay? And, and the reason it's on Wednesday night is, all this group has to go to the TSBA conference on Thursday morning, so it's the only reason we'll move it.
So Pam will send us out?
Yes, yes, and I'm, and I'm gonna send you out a reminder on the, the four H also. I've just, sorry, been, been a busy week. In your mailbox, yep, should be annotations of the dinner.
So we'll start at four forty-five?
Four forty-five, yes, training, we'll start at four forty-five. Eat and do the training, yes.
That it?
Yep.
Anything else? Not, we're adjourned.
We can get to watch the ballgame.